Okay, I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, April 6th to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I ask that all of our board members please mute your phone until we offer a time to speak? Sorry about that, but it creates an echo in the room. Did someone hang up?
It looks like we're down to just the two on computer. Krista and Kip?
Yes?
Okay. That's weird.
Okay, great. All right, thanks so much, everybody. First Selectmen's Report. I have a bunch of things this morning, and during my first Selectmen's Report, David, I will attempt, well, Kate and I will both attempt to answer the questions that you gave to us yesterday. So, everybody, we're trying to keep the town of Darien's website populated with up-to-date information, all about COVID-19 in regard to local response, state response, and federal response and programs that are available to individuals, so take a look there. When you go onto the town's website, darienct.gov, there's a red banner at the top. You can do two things in that red banner. You can hyperlink to sign up for code RED, which I strongly suggest, and please sign up with both your phone numbers and your emails, so that we can communicate with you in both of those ways. And you can also link to our COVID resource page from that red banner at the top. I want to express my deep gratitude to all of the people that are helping with the town's response to the COVID crisis. First and foremost, to our healthcare workers and our first responders, who are on the front lines of this every day. And I also consider our grocers and our pharmacists and our restaurant workers to be on the front lines, too, so thank you so much. To our fantastic Town Hall staff, you know, our essential staff comes in every day. It's an unusual time for us here in the town of Darien, but they are trying to keep business as usual for everybody as best we can, so I want to thank my staff for that. In particular, our Human Service Director, Ally Ramstek, and her staff, and Beth Paris, who are continuing to serve our seniors and our most vulnerable residents with anything that they need, in particular with providing them with food for our seniors that's been generously donated through the Corbin Cares Project, wonderful collaboration of David Genovese and the Darien Foundation and the Community Fund of Darien to feed our seniors every day from a local restaurant that's organized through Food Rescue USA. And our Human Service Department, who's making sure that our kids on free and reduced lunch are getting food and gift cards, and our seniors and those who are medically vulnerable who can't get to the grocery store, a partnership with Palmer's Grocery Store to shop for them and have their groceries delivered. And again, shout out to our first responders, police, and firefighters who are doing those deliveries. We have a cadre of school nurses in the town of Darien who've stepped up to help provide staffing at the town of Darien's testing site, and I'm really grateful that they have been able to help us facilitate testing here at the local level. And I want to also thank everybody who's sending me encouraging notes and emails. It's very much appreciated at this time. So, speaking of testing, we are now adding a second day of testing. We'll be testing on Fridays from 9:00 to 12:00. Also provided, the testing will be provided by Murphy Medical Associates. If you need a test, you can go to Murphy Medical website, which is www.coronatestct.com, all one word, coronatestct.com. You will be screened, and the authorization will come right from Murphy Medical, and they will direct you to one of their available testing sites. They have other sites outside the town of Darien. On the town of Darien website, you can find an updated list of all call centers and testing centers. Folks are not limited by, if you live in Darien, you're not limited to come to the testing site in Darien. We've organized this site to make it more readily available for people, but your doctor may send you somewhere else, or you can choose another testing site, either in Stamford, at the Stamford Hospital, or at the Norwalk Hospital. You should not be limited in getting a test simply by the limited hours of the Darien testing site. I am working with Murphy Medical to plan for providing antibody testing to the town of Darien residents, and we will give you more information about that as supplies become available. People have asked me about when you know if you're recovered from the coronavirus. Murphy Medical Associates requires that a person must be symptom-free for 72 hours without the use of any fever-reducing medications. Then, after 72 hours of symptom-free, you will be tested twice within a span of 24 hours. Both of those tests must come back negative in order for you to be considered recovered. Let's talk about masks for a moment. The Surgeon General this weekend recommends that everyone who is out in public or in a public setting where distance can't be guaranteed should be wearing a face covering of some kind. Surgical masks and those N95 masks that you hear talked about should be reserved for first responders and healthcare workers only. You can make your own cloth mask at home from just about anything, a cloth napkin, a bandana, any other fabric, and utilize that when you're out in public, like at the grocery store or the pharmacy, because there's some thought that the virus could be transmitted in an aerosol form from even common speaking. So, be careful, be mindful of that. I did see lots of people this weekend following those rules, which was terrific, but please reserve those surgical masks and N95s for our first responders. When you're outside, I encourage you to be outside. It's a beautiful day today. It's going to be a great week. You still have to distance when you're outside. Being outside doesn't protect you from those rules. And also be mindful, there's lots of people out walking right now, so watch out for cars. Cars should watch out for you, too. But, you know, don't pass somebody too close. Everybody's nervous about the distancing rules, and you need to respect that if you're out walking or jogging or biking. Keep the same, at least six-foot distance when you're enjoying your outdoor activities. Along with the nice weather comes, you know, inappropriate use of the public school fields. All the fields at the schools are closed. They're closed for everybody, and so kids and parents alike can't use the school fields. Police have been monitoring that. Police are overburdened by that, quite frankly, and are spending too much time at the schools chasing groups of kids off of the high school property, so please follow those rules. We may repost signs to say no trespassing that would enable the police to issue tickets and citations, which they really don't want to do, so please help us out by following those rules. And don't park on-street around our parks and beaches. Parks and beaches are closed to vehicular traffic for now. No parking signs have been posted. Please observe those. The police will be enforcing those strictly. We are working on a Plan B for our parks and beaches, so as soon as we can, we will try and open those back up to vehicles, but we're not ready to do that quite yet. Also, a word of caution, the transfer station is always an interesting gathering spot, even more so right now when people don't have too many places to go. You cannot gather at the transfer station. The swap shop is closed until we make, until the crisis clears and we can open that back up. I have heard that some people are stationing themselves up top where people dispose of their recyclables in their garbage to try and divert items from, you know, people throwing things away. That's not allowed, and that will now be enforced at the transfer station. So, use it as you would to go and take your recyclables and your garbage, but don't gather, and please respect everybody else's distance. I am seeking additional guidance about golf courses and boat clubs. To date, the governor has said that golf courses can remain open under strict guidance rules. No clubhouse activity, no common use of rakes and pins, no sharing of carts, et cetera. I know this is creating some consternation within our community, but I can't go against the guidance of the governor, so I will seek guidance about that. We also know that our boat clubs are due to open soon, which will pose some other challenges to us, so I will be, you know, be on the lookout for some guidance coming from me about our boat clubs. And just a little bit on data, I've posted, I've been trying to post data regularly for the town of Darien. We have 101 cases as of today. Sadly, yesterday I had to report our first death. That individual was between the ages of 50 and 59, so we send our deepest sympathy to their family and friends. No way to really prepare for that moment. I knew it was going to come, but it was still a shock nonetheless. We have hired a new nurse to help us with local data tracking and patient outreach. I want to take a moment to say that while the state might be doing the best they can with data collection, it's really, we are not getting the data that we need in terms of the actual number of cases of people positive with COVID, and we're not getting local data on the number of hospitalizations, nor are we getting any data about discharges and people that are recovering. And I think it's imperative that we get that data, so that we can all feel hopeful that we are getting through this. Just to let you know, Murphy Medical testing results, only 8.4% of the people they test are positive for the coronavirus, which means 91.6% of people tested are testing negative. So, there might be other illnesses out there, common flu, other things, but I think that's some hopeful news, so we need some data to really back that up, to let people know when people are released from hospitals and when people are actually getting better. So, we're working on that locally, since the state is not providing that. So, that was a lot to say, but I want to just take a moment to go through some questions that David Martin posed, and then we will, we will open it up for board questions after this, and then we'll move on with our agenda item. So, David, your questions are, what's the source of the Darien data? That is, the Connecticut Department of Health provides all the data that we have. We get it daily through our local health director. They are the only person authorized to access a protected data system to provide us with that data. We haven't had, we have, in fact, had the one death that I reported, and that news came to us this weekend. It's not clear to us when that individual was hospitalized, or when that individual actually died, but we got the news this weekend. The number of people tested at the high school testing site is about 50 people per day. It's a three-hour time block. Each test takes about three minutes, so you're limited in that time block in how many tests can be performed. And I already mentioned that the findings are, only 8.4% of those tests given are coming back positive. Any other data or situations you know of that we should be aware of or attuned to? Hopefully, I've covered those in my first Selectmen's Report. If not, please ask me when, when we unmute you. High school playing fields, yes, kids and adults both are using the high school playing fields. They shouldn't. Police are patrolling, and they've been asked to do more patrolling as needed. Yesterday, they were up at the high school three times to remove kids from the football field and the track. This is not a good use of our police time. So, to that end, I have sent an inquiry to the superintendent, asking if the high school campus monitors could be deployed to take care of the high school campus itself. Should citizens call the non-emergency police number if they see groups using the fields? They certainly can do that, but please be mindful that the governor's order only says that groups of over five cannot gather. So, you know, if there's a couple of kids, they shouldn't be on the fields first and foremost, but that's a school rule, that's not a governor's rule. But, you know, be mindful that when you call the police, they're going to be out, deployed to, to do things that might actually not be necessary. So, the governor has issued an executive order that says no more than five people can gather, and if you are gathering with people that don't live in your household, you have to respect the distancing rules. That's a guideline, that's not in the executive order, so just be careful when you're making judgments about other people out in the community. The most important thing you can do, though, is to, to tell your family, your kids, and your friends, and your neighbors to respect the distancing rules and the non-gathering rules. I continue to get reports about people having birthday parties and backyard gatherings and the like, and it's just not smart. It's, you're putting members of our community in jeopardy by doing that, so I'm asking you to not do that. The fields are posted that they're closed. What we can do, if the school agrees, is post them for no trespassing. That gives the police department some additional powers, so that will be a decision made by the school district. And now you've asked some questions about budget approval, which I would love for Kate to address.
So, that is a rather complicated issue. The governor's executive orders have said that the legislative body shall authorize the budget-making authority to approve the budget. So, what that means for us is that the RTM actually has to meet to vote to give authority to the Board of Finance to finalize the budget. We are working on trying to get that changed. I don't think when the governor's staff put together that executive order that they really thought of the ramifications for communities that had a representative town meeting. But it does present some challenges to us. How to have an actual, an RTM meeting, we can do it the same way we're doing this. It'll be a little bit more difficult to take votes, because they'll have to be done by roll call, but we likely will attempt to have an RTM meeting sometime this month or maybe early May. We haven't decided on those dates. The moderator has to do that, but we are going to have to go forward and have a meeting, because we have some other items that need to be addressed, and if the orders from the state have not changed, that meeting will include the authorization for the Board of Finance to go ahead and finalize the budget. The Board of Finance is working, they're reaching out, asking questions individually, so they are doing their due diligence. They have a meeting planned for the 14th, at which I assume there may be some budget discussion.
The one thing that I'd like to add, there's kind of an interplay with another executive order that was recently issued about municipalities also being required to provide tax relief programs, tax deferral, and a low-interest deferment option. We must provide at least one of those programs, if not both, and again, that requires the legislative body to vote to adopt those programs, and we have to provide guidance to the Office of Policy and Management by April 25th about which programs we're going to offer. So, that will be another issue that will have to be voted on by the RTM, so I believe that there's going to have to be an RTM within the next two weeks to take care of this business. We are working with CCM and some lawyers that are working with the governor to potentially get modifications to the RTM rules, but, you know, we're going to try and keep the budget process and the, the business that the RTM typically does as normal as possible, and we'll just, you know, we'll just persevere to get through that. I do want to say one other thank you. I want to thank Sarah and Krista. They've been my volunteer coordinators to date, and I really appreciate the work that they're doing to, you know, chip in and raise their hand to, to help, so thanks so much to my teammates. And with that, I think I'd like to open it to some board questions before we move on with our new business. So, why don't I open it up first, just to make sure that, David, we've answered all of your questions?
You guys did a great job answering all the questions. Thank you. With regards to the high school fields, this is something I've been festered by multiple residents. We're just waiting on the administration to advise us that they would like us to post them as no trespassing. Is that where we are?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. And Sarah, do you have any additional questions this morning about our COVID report?
I do, I, yeah. I just was curious if you knew, I had heard that Post 53 was looking for some additional supplies. If you know our first responders or, you know, the nurses in town when they're doing the, the testing sites, if they're looking for additional supplies, if we, you know, need to help them as far as getting those supplies.
Yes. All of our first responders have requests out, both in the, you know, in a formal chain of command through the state of Connecticut, to get more supplies, and there has been public outreach specifically from Post 53 for supplies that would include those N95 masks, surgical masks, gloves, and, and the gowns, the other personal protective equipment. So, if you know of anybody that has a stock of those items, they can be received here at Town Hall by our Emergency Management Director, who will then get them to the right place.
Thank you. And the other, only other question I had was, we were just wondering if, if you've heard anecdotal, you know, concerns from the local hospitals, Stanford, Norwalk, or Greenwich, about how they're handling the patients. There were some comments a few weeks ago that the ICU was full at Stanford Hospital. I don't know if that's true or not, and, you know, how our local hospitals are doing.
I have not heard specifically about Stanford Hospital. I believe that they still had capacity, at least before this weekend. I also had heard that Greenwich Hospital was at capacity and that Yale was at capacity, but I'll follow up on, on that question.
Thank you.
Krista, do you have any additional questions this morning?
Yes. I want to say, thank you so much, Jamie, for your thorough and very informative report. I really appreciate it. I just wanted to clarify, going back to the schools, acknowledging that those are really care, custody, and control of the Board of Ed and the administration. But we're talking about fields. Are we really talking about property, or are we, because I'm just sort of feeling that people, the grounds, all the grounds, or closed, or just the fields?
It's just the fields, is my understanding. And to clarify the care, custody, and control situation, the schools have been great about helping us out by closing the fields, because, you know, the, the thought process is, if you close the fields, you're not going to have groups up there, or captains running captains' practices, et cetera, any structured play. And they've been fantastic about allowing us to keep set up our drive-through testing site. But during an emergency, the care, custody, and control actually can and is waived by the chief elected official, chief executive official. In order to make sure that we are responding and mitigating the crisis, I can issue directives that can overstep that care, custody, and control that, that is present in normal conditions.
Oh, okay. No, that's a good point. So, to clarify, Darien residents are allowed on school grounds, just not the fields, and not to congregate in parties of five or more unless they're practicing social, they can't gather in five or more, but they can be walking around parking lots, for example?
They can't gather in groups more than five, so it's, it's six or more. And yes, they can walk around, they can walk around the grounds if they're distanced and not congregating in groups of more than five. You know, having, the, the perfect example is people walking around the oval at the high school, you know, the front oval. That's a nice thing. So, that is, that has not been restricted. It's only the fields that have been closed at the Darien High School.
Okay. Perfect. Just wanted to clarify that. And then my other question now relates back to the, the beaches and the parks. Could you just clarify, I'm still kind of a little, I appreciate the momentum to try to open up the beaches to the, if possible, and, you know, plans to come regarding the vehicular traffic, but has, we got, have we gotten clarification from the attorneys as to the governor's orders, our ability versus our neighbors? Because I think we're seeing inconsistent behavior from the governor to our neighbors. Not that you can comment on our neighbors, but is there any color on that?
Yes.
I.e., Zuccane enclosing their parks?
Yes, there is inconsistent guidance given, because the governor has not issued a directive specific to parks and beaches. And so, different municipalities are instituting different policies based on the, the activities and behaviors of their own populations. So, the reason why the town of Darien, I decided that we should close the parks and beaches to cars, is because the largest problem we had were people coming packed into cars and congregating at the beaches. So, you know, it wasn't an action that I, I wanted to take, but it was one way to try and be a little bit more surgical, if you would, in response to the problem at the parks and beaches. You might also know that we left the, the nature preserves open, because they're trails, and, and they lend themselves to be less likely for people to congregate on the trails, that, you know, people to enjoy them in a more solitary way. That is the guidance that the governor gave, was that people should enjoy state parks and beaches in a solitary way. Well, that was not happening here in Darien, so we had to take a, a different action. Why I think it's important to come up with a Plan B is, I really want our parks and beaches to be available to the Darien public. They're wonderful places of respite for people to enjoy, and we are soon going to be faced with the challenge of managing the opening of the Darien Boat Club. And I got guidance on Friday that said that boat clubs and yacht clubs are allowed to be open. So, it'll be very difficult to manage that if, if the beach isn't open at the same time. So, I'm working hard with Kate and Pam Geary to come up with a plan that may allow us at some point to open them back up, but to have substantive enforcement to make sure that people are not congregating.
But just to clarify, we're, the public, we hear some people asking about closing the beaches, and it is the guidance of our council that until the governor directs that, it would not be a move local municipalities should be taking. Is that correct?
We, if the governor hasn't issued guidance, municipalities can do what they want.
Oh, okay. Okay. Just wanted to clarify, so we, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions, Krista?
No, good. Thank you.
Okay. And how about you, Kip? Any questions today?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, great. Then we're going to move on with new business. Item number one, I just have one question. Oh, sorry. It's the Town Administrator's Report.
Yeah. I, just one thing I want you all to be aware of, and the public as well. We do expect the construction at Highland Farms to be beginning shortly. It is one of the exceptions to the essential, I guess it's considered essential under the governor's executive orders, so that construction will be beginning likely this week.
Thank you, Kate. Okay. New business, discuss-
Can you just elaborate on that? I'm sorry, Jamie.
Darien Construction will be beginning to construct the parking lots at Highland Farms and the walkway, the walking trail.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions about Highland Farms? Hearing none. New business, discuss and take action on a request to appropriate the Lot SIP grant, which is in the amount of $1,174,000. So, Ed, would you like to speak about this a little bit?
Sure. I don't know if they can hear me on the phone or not.
They'll be able to hear you from CB7.
Oh, okay. Sure. Just to quickly recap- Sure, just to quickly recap, this is the funding from the state and federal government for the project at Rowan Avenue and West Avenue intersection. We've been working on it for a couple of years now, and we're just about ready to wrap up the acquisition of the easements. We have come before the Board of Selectmen previously to speak about those easements, or in the process of getting approval from the RTM right now to have them approved. But this part here is allowing us, or will allow us, to spend the funds once we obtain them from the DOT. We have not obtained them yet. We are in the process. The process will be, once we're done with the easement acquisitions, we will submit the easement acquisition documents to the DOT along with our final design plans. They will review those final design plans, comment if needed, at which time, when that's done, we will bid this project out and get a contractor and get a low bid. Once the low bidder is approved, we will then obtain the funds from the DOT, at which time those funds will come to the town and will be, you know, will need to be appropriated. We, this appropriation right now, this request is going to take care of that portion of it so that once we get the money, we can go right into construction, pay off the easement acquisitions, and continue to move this project along.
Thank you very much, Ed. And just to add a little bit more detail, you might recall that those easement acquisitions were to be on the last RTM meeting agenda that got canceled. So we're going to hope to put those back on when the RTM does meet to get those taken care of. So this process for us today, for my board members, is really to help streamline the time so that we can get people ready to go into construction when the funds become available. Do any of our board members have questions about this appropriation? Okay, hearing, was there a question? No? Okay.
No.
Okay, great. So we'll do a roll call vote on this. I'll entertain a motion to approve the appropriation of $1,174,000 from the Lot SIP grant to professional services and construction.
Come on.
Was that Krista? Was that, okay. Krista moves. May I have a second?
Kip will second.
Thank you, Kip. Okay, all those in favor. David, how do you vote?
Vote in favor.
Thank you. Sarah, how do you vote?
Yeah.
And Krista and Kip, I assume you're a yes, since you moved in second.
Yes.
And I vote, I vote yes. So that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And Jeremy and Ed are both here, so thank you both for attending today. Thank you. Okay, we're going to ask each of you to provide a brief update of your activities on the other committees that you're serving on. And let's start with Kip Coons and the Ox Ridge Elementary School Building Committee.
All right. Can everybody hear what I'm saying?
Yes.
Let's go. Quick background, sort of to be up to date. As we started this project back in September of 2018 with a request from the Board of Education, the former committee considered rebuilding a new Ox Ridge school, and they gave us Ed specs to how to build it. Created the Board of Selectmen, created a specific charge for the building committee, and the building committee was seated and started to work in late January of 2019. Did extensive interview processes with both architects and general contractors, and we chose slam as the architect, joint venture ONG Industries, and AP as construction manager, that would be in the spring of 2019. As we explained a year ago, due to the state funding deadlines and uncertainty about future funding, we approved, we approached the RTM for authorization for $63 million for a project that is still in the imagination stage. We did this in June. This authorization was passed by the RTM, and it was required before we could even make an application to the state for a funding grant. In the summer in full of 2019, along with the committee, along with the architect and construction manager, went through what the phase called conceptual drawings, and then the schematic design phase. And then January through March of this year, we went through the design development phase. Full presentation of design development was made on April 2nd at a virtual meeting in which all members of the committee attended and a number of ex officio members attended. This design development presentation, which is about 44 pages long, will be posted on the website this afternoon, Town website. We also, at March 5th, made a presentation to the Ox Ridge parents and the neighbors. They were invited to a meeting at the school. I should say that the design development, which is the second to last or third to last project in the sequencing of putting together a new building, we received three volumes of specifications, which are about 2,200 pages long, and 348 detailed drawings required for the estimators. Normally, we would now pause for three to four weeks, waiting detailed cost estimates being derived from the 348-page document of drawings. However, we're moving forward with construction drawings right away, waiting for the estimates to come out toward the end of April. Construction drawings will begin, and hopefully by mid-June, we're going to be done with them so that we can go back to the state in July and have what is called a pre-construction review, which is required by the state. The other thing that is uncertain right now is we have a series of regulatory approvals which we have to go through. The EPC we've gone through and been approved. We are all set to do the ZBA, but that's been postponed until the 22nd of April. Who knows if that will be held at that time? The Architecture Review Board, we're scheduled for an April 21st review. Again, we don't know if that's going to happen. And for the planning and zoning, we've rescheduled for the May 12th meeting. Again, all of this is subject to the agendas created by the pandemic. Hope we can move forward. The regulatory delays will not affect, if they occur, any of the, what we call the enabling work, which is the work which is to prepare the school, existing, for construction that we're going to begin hopefully in the fall of this year. The enabling work will take place starting in mid-June and continue through the summer months when the school is out. We've already received regulatory approval to do the enabling work. We have to also get the state involved with that, approving it for funding purposes. And we also, of course, need building permits and demolition permits for the portions of the school that we're going to be working on. So we've been very busy. We're going to have to review all of these 340 drawings. And I'm very pleased that our committee of 10 is working quite hard and quite coherently on this project. So far, with the exception of the possible delays in regulatory hearings, which is understandable, we seem to be able to move on time with our program right now. Don't, no certainty about what's going to happen if we get into the month of May and June and things are still not happening. So that's our quick update. Again, the complete design development presentation will be put on the Town website. I think you can get a pretty good idea of what the school might look like. It's not totally finished in all the design elements, but it gives you enough information to see what it might be. And that is my report.
Thank you very much, Kip. Are there any board questions about Kip's report?
No, Kip, it's Sarah. I just wanted to thank you for all of your hard work. I know this is a huge amount of time.
Any other-
Planning takes time, better than making mistakes during construction.
True. Any other questions for Kip? Kip, could you-
No, thanks so much, Kip. That was very helpful.
Kip, could you put that report in a short memo so that we can keep it in the files with our meeting agenda?
I will put it in the memo for you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Let's move to Sarah. Do you have any updates about thriving youth?
I do. Our last meeting was in January. We had a discussion, a lively discussion on social media and technology and our children, and we've been updating a group called "Okay to Delay." We were supposed to have a meeting in March on the 19th, which we have canceled. Our next meeting is scheduled for May. The activities that have occurred in the past with the Task Force, the majority of you, Task Force did sponsor a movie, a documentary, called "If They Had Known," which was at the Darien Library. It focuses on a death of a young man due to prescription drugs and alcohol. The high school and the YWCA had a meeting at the end of February regarding language and the LGBT22 community. And the thriving Task Force, although it did not meet in March, did put out and wealth of resources to be used at thehubconnecticut.org, which has many mental health resources for southwestern Connecticut. There's many links and videos, which is very helpful, so that can be passed around. They are currently applying for a grant with Anchored Gillespie from Communities for Action for a drug-free grant, which is about $125,000 per year for five years. So that would be fantastic for our town. Look forward to meeting in May and continuing the good work.
Great. Thank you very much, Sarah. Any questions for Sarah about thriving youth? No? Okay, then let's go to David on BLIT.
Okay, the BLIT Commission's last meeting was on March the 11th. And we have a tentative meeting scheduled for the third week of April. We'll have to see how that goes. There are currently nine, there are three, for those of you that haven't focused on this, we got a detailed listing. We have categories that are, you know, properties that are closed, properties that are watchlisted, and then properties that are deemed to be active. So the active ones are the most difficult cases. Currently, there are nine cases that are deemed to be active and 13 watchlist cases. There's one of the watchlist cases that has been referred to counsel. The property has been accruing BLIT fees for some time, and the total of the fees has become substantial so that we are proceeding at this time to file a deed on the property, given the substantial accumulated unpaid fines. In this particular case, we are not expecting that the owner of the property is likely to cooperate with this, which has pushed us to take that particular action. We have one case in town that Public Services is involved in. They have made contact with the owner of the property, spoken with them. This is a recurring property. We have a promise that the owner will attempt to clean up the property when the weather gets warmer. And we were tentatively scheduled to have the next contact date for the beginning of April, but I think Ally's been quite concerned with other things at this point in time. We also have one case that's been on the list in the active status for going on three years. There hasn't been much activity on this property during that time period. The house appears to be abandoned at this point in time. So we've asked legal counsel to provide us with some guidance about what the town is and is not allowed to do in this particular case, particularly if we are unsuccessful in locating the owner. The thought process being is that potentially we might be able to have DPW partially mediate the property, at least appear to look a little bit nicer. We have one property that had not been formally classified as active. It was on the watch list because there was still a tenant in the property. That tenant has now been evicted. And as of the 11th, we were in the 15-day window period before the bank is repossessing the property would be allowed to begin remediation. So we are expecting that the bank, who will be the controller of the property, will begin remediation at some point in the near future. We also have one other property that is likely to be moving from the watch list to the active list. This property was previously remunerated before Bob was hired as the BLIT officer. But there have been, there's been a fresh complaint from a neighbor, and we're currently investigating the remediation that's done at the property. Much of the renovation, the property was still utilizing trucks. And the commission has decided that simply tarping the BLIT situation is not adequate. It brings its own host of risk in terms of providing living habitat for animals and things like that, which would be unsatisfactory. So there's a good possibility that property will be moved back to the active status, and we'll be having Bob take some activities there to try to remediate.
Okay, thank you. I didn't capture the number of cases on the watch list. I heard nine actives and how many watch list properties, David?
There are 13 watch list properties.
Thank you. Okay, great. Anybody have questions for David about the BLIT committee? Nope? Okay, then we'll go to Krista on Pear Tree Beach Building Committee.
Okay, thank you. Pear Tree Beach Building Committee last met on March 4th. We continue to work with our team of Neil Hawke, Weston and Sampson. We are now working with Redness and Mead, Inc., and Race Coastal Engineering. So the town is working with several authorities and great resources to assist us in this project. The focus, the most recent focus for the committee, again, the charge is extensive in working with the Pear Tree Point Beach in general. Right now, we are working on the, quote, "regrade parking lot to correct drainage issues." The committee heard a presentation at our meeting on March 4th. All this information, just to reiterate, is going to be online, or is online, I should say, if there are any further questions to look at. The consultants presented to us thoughts of regrading to alleviate the flooding issues and reiterated how this flooding issue was going to exacerbate in years to come based upon past title analysis. They are working with Connecticut Deep and trying to get meetings up there, but given the state of current affairs in Hartford, they have not had, our consultant team has not been able to meet to follow up, but they are continuing to work on the presentation with Deep to see what their thoughts are in improving the parking lot and the thoughts that we have, which would be to raise the parking lot in different areas to alleviate, again, the flooding. And the committee is expected to meet again on May 6th. We are not meeting in April. As far as the buildings, we have not been discussing that as much. We are waiting for, we have not heard an update, which would ultimately come from the Parking Rec Commission regarding the recommendations from the Police Commission on the needs of the police department in that area. So that has not been addressed until we, that's one open issue. And that's just my quick update from the Pear Tree Point Beach Committee.
Krista, can you tell me what work is being done on potential analysis of the boat ramp in relation to the work that might be considered in raising the parking lot? I can't help but feel that those discussions and analysis should be happening simultaneously.
Well, absolutely. Well, that, certainly the boat ramp is an issue that the committee wants to address. It is the understanding that with the regrading of the parking lot, that is going to help the boat ramp issue, so that the incline won't be the problem as much anymore. So that will be, will simultaneously achieve a better result there also.
Okay, I guess I'm not, I'm not actually clear, and I can follow up with Pam and Mike to see what kind of a review, analysis, engineering review needs to be taking place with the ramp itself. So I can follow up on that, too.
Hi, Dave. This is David. I was, I was present at the, at the meeting that Krista is referencing. There is some, there's some connective drainage pipes in the immediate vicinity and around the boat ramp. But the idea that Krista is espousing, or what was talked about at the meeting, is that if the area of the parking lot is raised, then that creates a steeper boat ramp, which has been the issue for launching at lower tide levels in that particular area. So actually raising the parking lot partially remediates the existing issues by itself.
Yep, so I get, from a conceptual standpoint, I understand that completely. I just don't know if it's as simple as that, if there's some kind of interplay between the ramp and the parking lot, if any reconstruction or reengineering of the boat ramp will also be required. So, I can, I can try and begin to follow up on that.
Okay, the question was certainly asked. He did not mention that, but yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any other questions for Krista? Okay, well, I want to thank you all very much for your comprehensive updates. That was great. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is meeting minutes of March 23rd, special meeting. When you're ready, I will take any corrections, additions, and if there are none, I will ask for a motion to approve.
This is Kip, so moved.
May I have a second?
Sarah, second.
Sarah, okay. All those in favor, we'll just do this by saying aye. All those in favor say aye.
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 Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Going once? Going twice? Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Does someone have an agenda review item? Okay, if not, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Kip.
May I have a second?
Seconded, David.
David? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, everybody, thank you very much. Stay well, and we'll be in touch.
Thanks so much.